The way we'd like to start is to give each candidate just a very short period of time, say 90 seconds, we're not going to time you, but a short answer to really what you think you would bring to this particular school board at this particular time in the district's history.
And we can start now?
We can start right now.
So I have not spent, I'll start by saying what I have not done, and I have not spent hours and hours volunteering in the classroom. What I bring is thousands and thousands of hours looking at programming, evaluating programming, and evaluating systems where these programs actually work in terms of increasing student achievement. And I'm hoping to bring that kind of expertise to the board, to truly being able to ask the right questions in terms of what the board's priorities should be, in terms of programming, in terms of investment. I'm hoping also to bring an innovative voice to the board. Because of my work, I've been able to see innovations in our region, in the state, and in our nation. I'm hoping to bring that type of innovation to the board, and I think having that outside view allows you to have a very objective perspective in terms of how to push the district, how to push the district forward.
A question about the subject of English laning, because that is where you sort of made your choice to step out in a public forum and voice your opinion about something that the school board was doing. You supported the proposal by the PALLI ninth grade, the English department at PALLI, to delane the two English classes into one. And I want to read you just a comment you made in your guest opinion in the weekly right after that decision was made. You said, "In our school district as well as others, parents of higher achieving students and school administrators have strongly advocated for differentiated paths that put students into lanes according to their level of proficiency. The assumption being that this provides them with more of an individualized instruction, but in fact it does just the opposite." And then later you said, "We are cheating our students out of a chance to gain key skills by narrowing the set of peers that they interact with. Real life will present them with the need to collaborate, create, develop critical thinking, and communicate with a diverse set of individuals." So could you address the subject of English laning, how it applies to these principles, and what you would say to PALLI parents or GUN parents who are concerned about their kids not getting as demanding a curriculum as might be otherwise available if it wasn't delaned?
So I think that this decision said a lot about the way that our school district has been, has been working. Here's, here's the thing, in terms of the Palo Alto teachers' proposal, it disturbed me for two main reasons. The first thing is, these are the teachers that are in the front line, right? And the instruction that they were providing in both lanes was incredibly rigorous already. What's more, a lot of the students that were in the lower lane had already scored in order to be in the, in the higher lane, but they were, they were self, they were self-describing themselves as it being in the dummy lane. What is evidence-based is that the more that you have higher expectations for all kids, the more they will rise to those levels of expectations. Creating this bifurcated path is really not only hurting the ones that are in the lower performing lane, because you are, you are decreasing the expectation for these kids, but here's the thing, when we're talking about the higher achieving kids, the best education systems in the world tell us that if you're able to individualize instruction in a way that these higher achieving kids are able to truly support the lower achieving kids within that environment, they themselves deepen their, their knowledge of the content and their ability to use that content in a larger environment. So, you know, it is, it is not the fault of the students to be placed in these, in these different pathways. Teachers, teachers need to have the ability to truly individualize instruction in the classroom, and this is, this has been proven globally that, that really benefits those in the higher lanes as well as those in the lower lanes. When I spoke in the article about the need to make sure that you're collaborating with a diverse set of tools, with a diverse set of kids, that's exactly it. How are we going to prepare kids to be in the workforce, to have to deal with a team of very diverse people that look at things in a very diverse way, right? And not, and not providing that skills to practice, to practice now?
Is this more applicable to English and to freshmen than to other subject areas and other grade levels?
So I actually believe in specialization. It's not that I don't believe in, in specialization, but you don't specialize at the core, at the core level. Freshmen, you know, a kid when he enters freshman still doesn't know what, what passions he has, what's really going to drive them. So I do believe that we need tracks at the upper levels after we have, when kids have been able to choose where they want to go, what they want to specialize in, but it's more towards specialization, right? Than determine what their abilities are in freshman. We can't do that to kids.
Among the comments made by those that were, were concerned about this proposal was that, as it exists today, the English program, in this case PALLI, isn't providing adequate differentiated learning even within the two-lane system. And it sounds as though your point of view depends on the successful implementation of differentiated learning and having those resource, resources in the classroom and that capability. So are you, from what you've seen, are you satisfied that that capacity does exist on the part of the teaching staff and the resources available to them? Or is that something that has to come along with any delaning that ultimately takes place?
So the single most important factor in a kid's achievement and success is the teacher, right? So there is nothing more important that we should be investing, but teacher professional development. And one of the key skills that teachers can bring is the ability to individualize instruction, right? So that's a key investment. So can we be complacent? Not at all. Nevertheless, not, I don't know of any student that has been put in the upper lane that has transferred to the lower lane because the teacher was not, was not addressing their own individual needs. So I think we're doing well. I don't think we can be complacent. We should keep investing in, in a teacher professional development, especially around these core areas when we're, when we're building our kids to know where they're going to go.
So to broaden this a little bit, and to use this just as an example, I believe at the debate last week, you stated that you didn't think this was the type of decision that should come before the board. Can you elaborate on that and define where that line is?
Yeah. So here's, here's the thing, here's the magic of innovation. I think this was a pilot, right? It should come to the board when it has been a pilot that has been implemented and it's coming to the board, does this become policy? That's when it gets the board, right? But if it's at the local level and we're trying to see how this pilot is working, whether it's having the intended outcomes, whether there is additional needs to be, that needs to be invested in it, that is at the local, that is at the local level. And I think that might have been misrepresented in terms of the debate. This is, instruction is a policy decision, but this was a pilot, right? That's when we encourage innovation at the local level, where we want to make sure that we're scaling it, that's when it gets, it should get to the board.
But if you're the parent of a ninth grader who's part of the pilot, and you don't think your kid is getting the education that, that he or she needs or deserves, you're going to pick up the phone and try to influence a school board member to do something about it. What are you going to do when you get those phone calls?
I think one of the biggest roles that a board member can have is communicating the vision of the school district, that we are innovating because we want to make sure that we're providing an extraordinary learning opportunity for all our kids, and this is part of the work that needs to happen in order to be on the cutting edge of what education should be. So it is a conversation of, you need to frame things within context. This is a pilot, we're trying it, it's evidence-based, but we're going to measure and see how it works. And by the way, we're in Palo Alto. The freshman, the, the English lane is already at a very rigorous level, right?
Okay.
Following up on that, one of the issues that came up during the school board debate was school autonomy and the roles of evaluation and data-driven assessment of programs. So it seems like there's kind of two things going on. One is that there are pilot programs that could be evaluated and replicated at different schools. At the same time, there already exists a diversity of programs addressing the same type of issues such as social, emotional learning. And I'm wondering, it seems like everyone agreed that we should be evaluating and finding best practices and replicating. But what, how would you prioritize program areas right now that the board should look at, the school district should look at for evaluation and consolidation? Because in theory, it sounds great, but what would you prioritize in terms of programs that perhaps are running in multiple versions in different schools and could be candidates for, for some consolidation or best practice?
So I think that, you know, the role of a school district is to help each student reach their social, emotional, and academic potential, right? And you want to look for the programs that, that focus on that. So I would prioritize by saying, you know, what, we don't want to create a system of winners and losers in our school district, right? So we need to make sure that we're first making sure that, that the instruction is rigorous and that we, that we have even knowledge of the differences that we have in each of our schools. We don't even have that at the, at the tip of our hands. We need to know, you know, what is the system to get that information in terms of what works and what doesn't work. And then when we have the, the full knowledge of programs that are very well documented, then we can see, you know, these are the ones that have had the most impact in terms of student achievement. And again, by achievement, I mean a broad, you know, the social, emotional, and academic achievement, and which ones should, should stay. What's happening now is that because of a lot of choice programs, you've got lottery systems, winners and, winners who get into this, to these choice programs and losers that don't, right? And, and I think that we are, we are as a community, we're confusing the ability to have, to have choice and competition with the, with the absolute need for the school district to, to scale best practices and truly create a system of winners and, and winners. The, we already have a really good bullying policy, we already have a really good homework policy, but it has not been implemented consistently. What's more, I've been speaking to a couple of teachers that actually don't know what the policy is, so talk about implementation inconsistencies, right? Which we know both of these things are key to a social, emotional well-being, right? So first, you know, my, my bent is first to offer the prioritized services that a school, that a school district is, has to, it has its mission to do, which is assuring that our kids reach their full potential and making sure that all the policies are applied consistently.
Are bullying and homework specifically priorities for you as a, as a school board candidate? Or are there other programs that you would look at first for?
So this is where I would, this is where, you know, first I would, I would make sure that all, that we know what's happening and that it's incredibly well documented. You know, I, we saw the Beren Park Makers Fair, and it was like, so tell me, is, is how did you do this? You know, how, what are the, the different efforts that you need to make it happen? It was a teacher that really wanted to do it and went ahead and made it happen. We can't have, you know, we can't have a functioning school district if, if we don't have a system that is documenting, that is documenting what is happening, that, that has an evaluation plan in place, and that it's measuring, that it's measuring consistently and providing information to the parents, to the teachers, to the board. You know, we might love a program, we need to see what impact it's having on student achievement.
But just to push this a little bit further, because Jocelyn's trying to get down to specifics, the new superintendent last week promised the board that he was going to identify a certain number of programs that he wanted to make priority for an evaluation. He didn't say what they were, and the board was, was pushing him a little bit to do that. But that's, I think, what Jocelyn is asking of you. If you were in the shoes of the, of the brand-new school board superintendent, taking a fresh look at what's going on in this school district programmatically, what are the two or three programs that you would want to do a sort of top-to-bottom look at in your highest priority of evaluation?
So I think that, to me, and it's, it's because of my background and what I have seen work, I would invest clearly in what's going on around Common Core implementation, clearly as a priority, and I'll tell you why. I've seen that implementation has been incredibly inconsistent. Some teachers are incredibly excited about it, some teachers don't know. I was in the open house at my son's school where the teacher said, "Well, we've heard of the next-generation science standards, but I really haven't seen them." You can't be saying that at this point. And I think the Common Core is an incredibly strong framework, specifically because it not only looks at the, the skills that need, that, that kids need to have to be able to be successful in college or career, but it's looking at non-cognitive skills, right? Grit, productive, persistent, all of those. And if we're able to make sure that this is instilled in every single one of our classrooms, we might not need a bullying policy. We might not need other, other priorities and programs that have been very highlighted in, in your reporting, right? We need to make sure that those are part of what happens every day in every classroom.
I want to go back to the achievement gap question briefly and ask you to give us your, both professional and your judgment as a candidate, as to why it is that in this school district, the disadvantaged kids are performing at a lower level than in other comparable, high-performing school districts? Why is it that we have not had as much success bringing those kids up as other districts have that are comparable to Palo Alto?
So I am going to say that our school, our children, our socioeconomically disadvantaged kids of color in Palo Alto are actually performing a lot worse than in many other school districts that have a larger proportion of kids of color socioeconomically disadvantaged. So it's even worse than that. I think there has never been a real push to close the achievement gap. I can't see it. I've participated in the PALLI WASC process. You know, there was a lot of cheering about what we had done. When it gets to the achievement gap, it was always left to, well, this is what we're going to keep working on. You know, we should be measured as a school district in terms of how we're doing with our lowest-achieving kids, with our kids of color and socioeconomically disadvantaged that need the school district the most, not with our highest-achieving kids, that regardless of the school district, they would do well, right? I think it has been amiss in terms of focus and amiss in terms of investment. We have a brand-new opportunity with the Local Control Funding Formula, with the LCAP. The LCAP is specifically targeted to make sure that we're investing in programs that are effective, go to closing the achievement gap. There was not a lot of work there. The strategic plan has not shifted a bit with the LCAP process, and it was a great opportunity. I think that was a huge missed opportunity from the school district. You know, if I were, if I were a school board member, I love the fact that we have a strategic plan, but I would actually change the strategic plan in terms of objectives and say, you know, in five, 10 years, we will close the achievement gap. 100% of our kids will be proficient. We have the money, we have the, the ability to do it. Why are we not going, why are we not taking a car and driving up to downtown college prep or any of the, of the schools that have 100% of kids of color socioeconomically disadvantaged and asking them exactly what programs they are, they are investing in to make sure that they're closing the achievement gap?
But what are those programs? I mean, you must, in your work at the Community Foundation, you must see those programs. So share with us, what, what is the difference?
So I think the single most important thing is belief system, belief system. And this is why the laning issue matters so much to me. If you tell a kid, "This is your level of achievement," that is exactly what the kid is going to do. If you tell a kid, "This is what I expect from you," that is exactly what the kid is going to do, right? So the first thing is the teachers need professional development to understand the biases that they bring into a room. And they need to make sure that they're setting incredibly high expectations for all their children. You know that in Finland, a teacher is not, a teacher does not allow themselves as a policy to ask the kids their background, because they feel that if they get invested in the kid's background, they will lower the expectations for that child. And that's exactly what's happening in our classrooms. So I would make sure that I'm investing in teacher professional development to remove those barriers and hold all kids to the same level of expectations. And I would, would make sure that I'm investing in supplementary program for these kids. There's a program called Jose Valdez, which, which is a program that has existed for 17, 18 years in the east side of San Jose, and they take kids in the summer for six weeks and give them intensive mathematic instruction for six hours every day. My kid would never stand six hours every day during the summer doing, doing math problems. They do over 5,000 problems in six months, in six weeks. These kids, in one, in six weeks, are able to increase their level of proficiency by one year, by one year. And it's happening in our, in our own backyard. Why are we not doing exactly the same thing with our kids? But I'll go back to my first point. We need to, we need to believe as a community that all kids must be held to the highest level of, that we should have the highest expectation for all of them. We should have a strategic plan that says 100% of our kids should be proficient. We're Palo Alto, for God's sake.
In making those observations about seeking innovation, innovative ideas that are in use elsewhere, I assume what you're saying is that you don't think enough of that is being done by this district. Given our locale, why is that? Do you attribute that to a mindset that, that we need to home-grow innovation within our school district? Defenseiveness on the part of teachers about outside ideas? Where's that, where does that come from in your mind?
I really believe that it's a feeling of, we've achieved so much and our kids are succeeding. Why, why shake the boat? Why move it? But what we don't understand is if we don't keep innovating, we're going to lose that, we're going to lose that, that, that level of world-class education. We can't be complacent, and that's what's happening. I mean, there's innovations that are happening at every level, right? I mean, the debate, we heard a lot about, why are we not listening to the community? Why are we not, you know? There's a, there's an organization called Panorama Ed. That, it's an, it's an organization that does very focused surveys. Imagine a 360 for a school district, right? And the way they, they provide that information is in a very operational, in a way that you can operationalize it, right? Redwood City has just hired them, and they are out of New Haven. Redwood City is, is looking at them, we're not. And that's, that's just in terms of, of how we view the school district, right? So anyway, I can, I can, we can talk about innovation at every level, but...
Yeah. I mean, I think everyone likes the idea of having partnerships, Stanford University, technology companies. What's the mechanism that you would foresee, or what role would the board play in making innovations happen? Because on the one hand, we have the idea that teachers are the ones who should be innovating, but what is the board's role in bringing this kind of spirit in the practicalities, operationalizing it to the district?
I think, you know, I love the fact when it's, I love the fact of organic innovation, especially stemming from the teachers who are at the front line, but the board has an obligation to be connected to the outside world, right? The board has an obligation to be updated in terms of research, in terms of best practices. We've got some of the best minds in education, they are influencing the world of education globally at Stanford, right? We should be having lunch with, with these folks once a month. We should be convening them and inviting them to pilot things in our school district. I was talking to Guadalupe Valdez, who's an expert, a worldwide expert in terms of English language learners and their achievements, specifically around Common Core. She took a charter school in San Jose, and she's experimenting at that charter school in San Jose. And I'm like, "Guadalupe, why aren't you working with Palo Alto? We are much closer, we could lower your commute." And she was like, "You know what? I've tried to communicate, there's no way. There's no way. We're losing an incredible amount of opportunities. This is where innovation should be happening."
There were some high school students in attendance at the debate on Thursday, and they submitted some questions that didn't get asked to the candidates, and I think that the student voice should probably be part of this campaign. So I'd like to just share with you a couple of these questions and ask for your, your answers. One says, "As a high school student, I am affected by what my teachers, administrators, and counselors do. I want to know how you think the board can influence them to reform and change when they are not acting in my best interest?"
When the board is not acting in the, when the, when the people that affect the student are not acting in their own interest?
Right.
So, so the, the number-one role of the board is to make sure that the district is accountable to their constituents. The single most important, our client are the students, right? When I, when I mentioned the Panorama Ed, this is, this is an organization that comes to mind. How are we listening to the voices of our students? How are we analyzing if they're engaged, if, if what they're doing works, if it doesn't work? There's, we haven't set up these kinds of feedback loops to actually modify anything that the school district is doing, because we're not asking people. We're not asking the students, we're not asking their parents. The survey, you know how many people answer the survey? It's a limit, the survey at the end of the year, it's a limited amount, because they're scared of retribution. I mean, just that whole philosophy is something that we need to change.
So the district's policy about teacher feedback, of course, is that it has, it can't be anonymous, has to go to the teacher with the parent's identity or the student's identity. You would propose changing that?
So I would propose making sure that, that we are receiving real information and from a, from a variety of sources to prevent the type of retribution that could come with putting the name, right? We need to be using multi-measures to measure each and every particular part of the educational system.
Let me read you another question from a student. "What is the purpose of tests in our district? Is it to give a certain number of As, Bs, and Cs, or is it to get a pulse on mastery of concepts? If the goal is mastery, why are the tests not released to students so that learning may continue outside of the classroom? This would enable students to more effectively learn from their mistakes. Historically, tests have been a lot harder than homework. This is the experience of most students."
We should be listening to our students. I mean, they're providing exactly the solution. Tests were actually designed, right? To see how the, how the teacher could modify their instruction to better serve their students. That is, that is, that is the reason for testing in the, during the year, right? My, my, my child recently said, "Mommy, the school is actually teaching me how to be successful." And I'm like, "No, that's not what, what school should be teaching you. School should be teaching you about the world and how what you're learning is relevant to the world and how you're going to be able to change the world because of what you're learning." That's what, what, what school should be teaching. I do believe in the need for summative assessments. We need to be able to, to know how, how schools are doing in order to better, better administer the budget and assure that we're making the, the most strategic investments instead of what impacts students, right? So I do believe standardized testing is a really good thing, but, but I think the most important type of test, testing is the one that is formative, which is actually what, what you're, what the student is saying. We need to be able to test mastery, and the teacher needs that very valuable information to truly... And the teacher needs that very valuable information to truly modify their instruction to better serve our clients, the students.
So several students submitted questions that go along the lines of this. Um, their experience in school, at the high school level, is that um teachers of the same subject are teaching those classes quite differently from one another. Their homework policies are different and their grading approach is different. And in many cases, the tests are different. Obviously, that's not the case in subjects like math, but um, and, and to these kids, um, that's not fair. So they're, so some kids are having to work much harder in a much more um difficult grading environment than other kids taking the exact same course. How, how important is that? I mean, what would you say to those kids? Is that just part of what we've always thought of? Sometimes you get good teachers, sometimes you don't get good teachers, that's life, don't worry about it. Or are they raising a legitimate concern and something that should be dealt with?
They're raising a very legitimate concern. They're raising a very legitimate concern. And I think a lot has to do with um, you know, many, many teachers and many parents confuse um rigor with load. Right? And I do believe that there needs to, that there needs to be a policy at the school district level to make sure that we're, that we are driving for consistency. I do believe it's unfair that um, that my niece has six hours of homework every day and my son has two hours of homework every day and they're in different high schools. Um, going for the same, um, going for the same, the same grades. Um, but it requires a lot of professional development in order to make sure that we are, that, that we are, we have the same expectations for what the kids should, should be able to uh, to do uh in each of the classrooms. So I, I, you know, when we talk about, about the board's role, I think it's really to, to create a system or ask the right questions to produce a system that's driving towards consistency. So kids are able to have consistent experiences K twelve throughout their instructional pathway.
So the goal should be kids taking the same class from two different teachers get more or less the same amount of homework, more or less graded on the same basis?
I think the most important thing is that they should receive the same, the, the same level of rigorous instruction. I'm not saying it's the same instruction. Because teachers, you know, are, are able to share their passion through different ways. But kids should be subject to the same rigorous instruction.
Right, but what about homework and test scoring?
It has to be consistent. It has to be consistent.
Okay. So uh, one last question on, on this topic, and that has to do with the homework policy, which you've alluded to earlier. Um, first of all, it's, it's not clear that that policy is really being uh abided by, by teachers. But on top of that, it doesn't apply to probably half the courses in the high school level because it doesn't apply to any honors or AP classes. Um, so for many students, it's kind of an empty um
Yeah, policy.
Can you, what, what is your view on that? Should, should the, how would you as a board member influence the administrators and the teachers to actually abide by the policy? What, what, what leverage do you as a board member have with regards to that? And should it apply more, apply more broadly to all courses as opposed to carving out the?
So I think that, I think the homework policy uh truly was a Band-Aid uh to uh to try to eh heal a lot of the, the um stress factors for students, right? I do believe that, that the more we are able to drive consistent policies, and it starts with teacher professional development. Why, why do we, why do teachers believe that they'll increase their level of rigor by increasing the load of homework? Right? If it, teachers need the professional development to say, how is the homework that I am giving my students really increasing their academic achievement? But the teachers need to be part of this discussion. Because it needs to be meaning, meaningful for kids' learning. And I think that was the miss of the school district.
You've raised the topic of professional development numerous times today. And then also um, the debate, you mentioned that was um, one of the budget areas that you would look at. Um, can you just explain to us a little bit about how does the professional development work currently? And what fixes or changes would you um, if you had the board?
Yeah, and, and you know, part of uh the reasons why I'm running is that I've heard board members say, well, professional development really doesn't work. Um, and this to me was, was just incredibly concerning. Um, I believe that uh the policy that we have now in place for professional development doesn't work. That doesn't mean that professional development doesn't work. Um, teachers, I believe, have eighteen hours of professional development that they can get throughout the year. But it's a checkbox. If you go to a conference, you can check it off, you did professional development. That's not the way adults learn. That's not meaningful professional development. Meaningful professional development is when they can talk to peers, practice in the classroom, make mistakes, get observed, and really grow as professionals. That's how we all grow in our field. And it's not only the professional development, the direct professional development. Teachers need then the time to collaborate with the, with, with other uh peers to find, find their skills, right? This requires an intentional investment in professional development that is really meaningful. But we've got to start with uh, we've got to start with saying that we've got great teachers. And we need to keep investing in our people and we're gonna make our organization great.
So your goal would be to take a look at that policy initially and then to put more specifics?
Immediately, especially within the con, with the context of a changing instructional framework. Um, changing, you know, changing uh with, with the effects of uh the social, social emotional um hazards that we've seen in our school. I mean, this is exactly where, where truly teachers are just, are the single most important um lever point for student success. There's no, right? If you can take everything else away, if you have a very connected, skilled professional at their, at their uh task.
So whose job is that? To, to shift from what you feel the, the district is not doing adequately in the way of professional development to what it should be doing? We, we increased the amount of money being spent on professional development by a significant amount this last year. Whose job is it to make that shift?
So I'll tell you what portion of a job, a job each level has, right? The superintendent, the superintendent's main job is to build a, build a, a site leadership, right? The single most important job that eh Dr. McGee should have is making sure that all the principals are dri, are driving learning institutions. And the single most important role a principal should have should be instructional development of their, of their teachers. That's it. And the board should make sure that the investments are being made in terms of the professional development being meaningful, meaningful and being effective. And establishing a, a metric system, an evaluation system to see if that, if that um professional development is working. And if it's not, we need to change it. There's no mechanism for that right now. Literally, it's teachers checking a box. We don't know if that professional development was effective or not. And all these resources that are being thrown into professional development are wasted if we can't measure their success or not.
I want to ask a question about Coverly. So Coverly is a huge community asset that is currently um used by the city but owned largely by the school district. And um, the advisory committee uh on Coverly recommended that by the end of last year, there should be a process um to decide what the future of Coverly would be. That timeline has come and gone and now the lease is set to expire at the end of this year. So in February, the city council decided that it would not support a covenant not to develop to continue. And then the school board in March um decided that they actually wanted it um to continue so that the one point eight million dollars would continue to come to the district. So there's a huge conundrum right there. And um, thinking about the property from the school board level, would you support the covenant not to develop continuing?
So the Coverly is, is, you said it, a huge asset for our community, uh for our whole community. Um, there's a couple of things that, that the advisory committee uh suggested that I would start immediately. Um, I think um, not only the needs assessment, but we need sort of a community vision for Coverly, right? And that community vision has to be um, not only for the growth of the school district, but also for the community. So I would, you know, I would, I would actually um make sure that we are renewing the lease for five years and use those five years to assure that we're building a community vision for that space that includes a high school and colocation of services that the community, that the community wants. Um, it's, it's, that space has provided so many um, um incredible uh, uh services to our, to our uh community. So I would just make sure that we are using it to the, the maximum of its abilities and we can't wait. Uh, we can't wait. Um, we need to make sure that we know how we're gonna fund it, how we're gonna fund the refurbishment and the redevelopment of it. Um, and assure that we are using it to its maximum potential. Um, but it is a, a school district um, um need as well as a city council, a need. I think we should be building a close partnership to really develop the community vision for it.
The, the challenge, however, is one of the, one of the approaches. The, the challenge for the, for the city is that the school board has been unwilling to commit to any timeline that relates to its use of the property. And so absent the, any commitment or timeline, the city, the, the school board, the school district would like the city to just keep on paying to rent the property. That is not a plan. Um, and a needs assessment is impossible to do until the school district makes a clear statement about when and how it intends to use its part of the property. Because everything has to be built around the school district's needs. So how do you get past that problem?
So I think part of the challenge in Palo Alto has been we've got, we've had very, very short-term vision. We haven't made decisions eh very forward-thinking. It's the same conversation about the thirteenth elementary, why haven't we built it yet? Why are we planning for it yet? So, you know, we need a facilities plan, that it, that's a five, ten-year facility plan. And we truly need to be building towards it, right? Um, we can't wait um any longer. The, the facilities at Coverly are, are, you know, are, are, are being destroyed and not, not used, right? So why not?
Well, the, I mean, the district's point of view is we don't want to invest any time or money in Coverly right now because we don't feel like we need it. And so they're asking for ultimate flexibility. City, just keep on leasing it and, and, and operating the site. And we'll let you know when we need it.
Why, why don't we know what we're gonna need? We do know what we're gonna need. We know we're gonna be like sixteen thousand students by twenty twenty-five. We know that. Give or take a few hundred, right? So I, you know, there's no, we can't keep putting our head in the ground and saying this is not gonna happen, we don't know yet. Yes, we do. We just have to plan ahead and truly be forward-thinking. And work with the city to make sure that we are um, making the best um use of um that huge asset.
Are you gonna shift to another topic? Okay, go ahead.
Um, so you would favor renewing the lease and use it five years for a, a period of time to decide?
Well, but, but, but truly be committed to making a decision moving forward.
Right. Um, would you, as part of that renewal of the lease, uh favor uh the continuation of the covenant not to develop and the one point eight million that's coming from the city to the school?
Well, that's the, that's, so that's, that's, that's the key issue. The problem is that um, we, as a community, I think we need the pressure um to move forward, right? We need the pressure to get the max, the maximum um use of the facilities. Um, and the one point eight might be something that might be uh slowing things down.
Um, a group of pretty passionate parents lobbied the school board during the retreat to expand um Aloni's Mandarin immersion program to the middle school level. Um, and I was wondering, you know, if such a proposal comes before you, if you're elected, um, what you would wanna do with it? And then sort of talk about that in the context of expanding foreign language learning.
So I, I believe, I was raised bilingualy and it's been a huge asset in my life. Um, there is no reason why all our elementary uh kids do not have access to a foreign language. So I would make a five-year plan of how are we gonna get foreign languages in all our elementaries? Um, I was talking at the beginning about creating the systems of, the system of winners and losers, right? Eh, I wanna make sure that, that we're expanding what works, but assuring that all our kids have access to the best practices that we've learned. So Mandarin immersion is, is a, um, is an example. Um, it's worked really well. Um, you know, there were a lot of questions at the beginning of putting it at Aloni, but it's, it's, it's truly uh, uh, been really well. And you can see that by the level of the, the amount of, of kids that are waitlisted for that program. Um, so I would make sure that we have a very consistent plan of how are we going to provide that opportunity to more kids? And how are we building K twelve pipelines for kids when they, when they finish uh twelfth grade? They're incredibly, not only um bilingual, but also bicultural, which I think is one of the magics of um the MI program. Is that it's not only the Mandarin program, but it's also the, the, the global citizenship that comes with um access to another culture.
So Aloni has now got over six hundred kids on that campus. So you've earlier mentioned the need to offer more families the opportunity to be in our choice programs. So you got two essentially choice programs at one school that is bursting at the seams. So are you prepared to split those two programs from one another so that they both are able to accommodate more families? Or if not, what solution do you propose?
So I think it's a different solution. So I'm not, I'm not advocating to, to increase the um, increase choice programs. What I'm advocating for is making sure that we are learning from best practices and allowing that opportunity to more kids. That might not mean another, uh, another eh choice program, right? Or the expansion of the choice program. That means that I wanna make sure that every kid has access to a foreign language, every kid has access to another culture. How do we scale that system wide?
But the philosophy Aloni goes, what, that's a, that describes the, the Spanish immersion and Mandarin immersion programs. But the Aloni uh philosophy and the connections program in the middle schools, those are.
By the way, that both of my kids have benefited from.
And both are intentionally approaching teaching in a different manner. So are you saying that because that's been so successful with those self-selected kids, those, that, that philosophy ought to be spread to other schools?
I am saying that, I am saying that. I think that we should learn from the best practices at each and every one of our schools by documenting it, by evaluating its impact on academic achievement, and then making sure that we're scaling it. We need to, we are a twelve thousand kids school district. We need to make sure that there's a consistent instructional pathway, K twelve, um, that benefits from the best of what we have.
And so what do you say to the Hoover parents who have selected Hoover and are very happy with that program as a more academic-oriented, um, challenging supposedly school environment?
So I think that.
How do you scale that at the same time as you scale?
I think it's very consistent. I think it's incredibly consistent. What's more, there's an Aloni teacher that is, is teaching now at Hoover and she's like, same thing. It's just a matter of really understanding what these cho, choice programs bring to the table and making sure that all our kids have access to those best practices. It truly is.
So you're saying it's a mindset problem?
I'm saying that we have to be a learning institution as a school district. That should be our, our number one priority as board members. Um, even is to make sure that we are intentionally learning, intentionally scaling what works.
I think that's probably a good place to end. You have any other questions?
I don't think so.
Is there something that you wanted to say that you haven't had a chance to?
I think we're at an incredibly important time in education in general. And I think there's a lot of things that are shifting. Um, we've got new um, uh, education technology like we've never had before. We've got a new funding formula, we've got a new, the Common Core state standards. And we cannot keep doing the things the way we've been doing them. Um, you know, we cannot rely on high-performing kids to uh, to keep pushing our school district in terms of being the hot, the, the lighthouse school district. There's a lot of work to be done to make sure that each and every one of our kids is, you know, the creative mind of tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.